Meeting to order. Are there any public comments for items not in the order? Not everybody at once, please.
None received.
Okay. So, the first item on the agenda is the election of Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair.
I am wondering if you would mind, since we haven't had a chance to do the minutes, read them because we just got them, and if we can move items three and four to the, after the public hearing.
Three, oh, you want to postpone three and four until after the public hearing?
Yeah.
That'll give you time to list, to read them?
Yes.
Okay. I'm okay with that if everybody else...
Yes.
We'll have to really behave tonight, though.
Yeah, I know.
All of us. Where'd you get that agenda?
We brought them with us.
Okay, I got an extra one.
Or on your screen, you can hit Agenda in the middle on the board.
That's cheating.
Okay, so if the commissioners are in agreement, we'll postpone items three and four until after the public hearing. So, we will then move on to the public hearing item, which is SP 14-16, Site Plan and Site and Design Review, CD 14-01, Code Interpretation, Similar Use Determination, and US 14-05. It's getting darker in here. And this is a continuation from actually the last two Planning Commission meetings for the Discount Tire, formerly known as American Tire, at the 2002 Washington Street near the intersection of Highway 213 and Prairie Schooner Way. So, seeing no one from the public here will dispense with the reading of the script. Do any of the commissioners have any ex parte communications or visits to the site since the last meeting?
No.
Yes, I visited the site again.
No.
I've visited the site.
No.
No.
And I have no communications to declare. I am very familiar with the site, since Home Depot is one of my favorite stores to shop at.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Can we call the roll real quick, just so that the minute taker can know who's all here?
Sure.
I think he said we were all here.
Okay. Maybe that's good enough.
Everyone is here, but...
I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
Laura, you want to go ahead and call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Mayby?
Hi.
Commissioner McGriff?
I'm here.
Commissioner Aguil?
Here.
Commissioner Espy?
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Hinkin?
Here.
Jerkidwell?
Here.
Okay, we will proceed then, first with the commission report, staff report.
All right, so I'm going to give the staff report from here with our new computer setup. I hope that's okay. Laura Turway, planner with the City of Oregon City, I'm here to present to you a review of a proposed building near 202 Washington Street, which is adjacent to the corner of Prairie Schooner Way and Highway 213. The lease area is generally highlighted in red right there. You'll notice it's a part of a larger piece of property nearby. You'll see the rather large rooftop of Home Depot and the Metro Transfer Station. There's also a gas station catty corner, and it's on top of a landfill. The applicant has proposed to install a store. We'll get into the use in just a minute. Here's the proposed landscaping plan, so you can kind of see the orientation and configuration of the store. I'll give you a couple more pictures before I'm done talking as well. At the bottom, in the very small pictures, you can see differences in elevation. So, the Highway 213 side, Highway 213 is built up quite a bit from the store location. Prairie Schooner Way is a little bit more on plain. They did a variety of landscaping that they have proposed. You'll notice the large island kind of in the middle. There are some parking stalls that they'll be sharing with Home Depot, and then some parking stalls that were built with this proposal as well. The staff level, the staff review of all the site plan design criteria, as well as street trees, street improvements, that would typically be done without a planning commission hearing. They're here before you tonight to talk about the use of the site specifically. So, I'm going to talk about more of just the use. If you have any questions about any details of the less objective criteria, we can talk about that, too. Use your elevations. The applicant has exceeded all of our design requirements. You can see they've exceeded our level of transparency, articulation, and other design criteria. You'll notice there's almost two fronts, the east elevation, which is Highway 213, as well as the north elevation, which is Prairie Schooner Way. Again, Prairie Schooner Way is a bit more on plain with the store than Highway 213. This store abuts generally both of those property lines. There are some adjustments in there to allow the store to sit back a little bit. Here's the site plan of the floor, plan for the first floor. So, this is, I'm excited to say, a two-story building, which is pretty rare that we've had new buildings in mixed-use downtown, but to have a new two-story building was pretty exciting as well. So, the first story, see if this works. You'll notice on, sorry, my little pointer is not working on this PowerPoint. On the left-hand side, there's the storefront, right above where it says first floor. And then on the southern portion, you'll see the, where there's not a lot of drawing, that would be the bays where the cars come in. Everything else is pretty much dedicated towards retail storage and display of the associated products. Here's the second story. Part of it is open to the area below, as you can see, but it continues storage of the retail product as well. Planning reviewed the report for compliance with our Oregon City Municipal Code. Our findings are provided in the staff report. There was an amendment to the staff report between when it was originally put out and now. The amendment was changes to conditions of approval number three and five, and we just changed the timeline. So, we gave essentially the applicant a little bit more time to complete those two items, and they were related to a non-monstrous, a couple of little tiny things. So, again, I want to talk about specifically use. So, the properties in our mixed-use downtown zoning designation permitted our retail and specialty stores, prohibited, this is the language exactly from our code, motor vehicle and recreational vehicle repair slash service, and then also motor vehicle and recreational vehicle sales and incidental service. I italicize the "and." We know that the proposed development does not include any selling of any motor vehicles or recreational vehicles, so that one we can sort of cross off the list. It's the question of if the use is permitted as a specialty store, or if the use is prohibited with motor vehicle and recreational vehicle repair and service.
And for the record, what is it that they are selling?
What a good question. They are selling tires and wheels, and the applicant can tell you a bit more about it as well. So, the product that they're selling and that's filling up the store are tires and wheels. There are some ancillary services associated with the product that they are installing on-site, like installation, rotation, and balancing. They're not working on any engine, they're not working on transmission shocks, batteries, any of that type auto-oriented uses. They're just working on the product that they're installing. They are mirroring some attributes of other specialty retail stores. Their business hours are standard business hours. They sort of close rather early, and then they're closed on Sundays. They have no outdoor storage. They meet all the design guidelines that all other retail and specialty stores meet, and they appear to be consistent with the mixed-use downtown description in our code, which is a high-volume establishment constructed at a human scale. So, with that, staff has recommended that the planning commission conditionally approve the file, and I'm here to answer any questions, and the applicant's here to answer more specific questions about use as well.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Is this, is the property partitioned, or is it leased from the Home Depot, or just what's the relationship there between Home Depot and this use?
That is a good question. It is not partitioned. It's identified as a separate building pad. So, Home Depot was constructed, their planning approval was in 1999, and then they did a revised approval also in 1999, and they showed future construction pad areas, so that it's all on the same property. But in this particular case, we kind of zeroed in on their lease area.
So, there's no problem with access going over Home Depot's property to get to this use?
It's all part of the same property. You may have noticed those conditions of approval that talk about access easements. There are sections in our code, and there were also sections in the code in 1999 when it was approved, that require you to provide access to others and connectivity through adjacent sites. And so, there is a condition of approval to get an easement over the part that looks like a road, when you come into a Home Depot site with street trees sort of at the intersection right there, to make sure that there's an easement for pedestrian utilities as well. So, that's private property. It's not public right-of-way.
Along those same lines, I'm quite familiar with America's Tires, Discount Tires, from their location in Clackamas. And I know that usually you park there while you're going in and look. I've done that a lot. And then, when the cars are down, they pull them off to a side to park them. Right now, when I was looking at, there's a lot of parking on the side, but right over here, but you're saying that right now, from looking at that, that's the only parking available, and the rest of it's to be used over here in the Home Depot parking lot?
Yeah.
Is that my understanding?
So, in our code, we'll have those maximum and minimum parking requirements. They show that they meet both of those, but to do that, they have the parking stalls that they propose within their lease area, and then they also...
Those few that are there.
Mm-hmm, the few that are there, and then there's a couple that they have to use on the Home Depot site as well. So, when Home Depot was built, knowing that they were going to have these future pads, they built the big parking lot in advance.
It is big, but I also, since I'm also a Home Depot fan, as well as America's Tires, those fill in quite a bit when Home Depot's open, and I'm just wondering about available parking in that area. If that's all taken up by Home Depot customers, what about the customers for Discount Tires?
Yeah, so they, when Home Depot was approved, they put a max number of parking stalls on the site, and so we have that, and then they built out a large parking lot. And so, we looked at this development, and then there's another pad area when that comes in. We'll look at that as well, to show that each of the developments individually, and then on the site as a whole, comply with all our standards, so it should be fine.
So, there won't be a requirement or a need to have something, this area for Discount Tires parking or something? Okay.
Fifteen-minute parking area for takeout only?
Yeah, something like that.
There's not going to be any outdoor storage of large vehicles, dual aisles, and stuff like that. This is just for passenger cars, more or less.
The applicant indicated there would be no outdoor storage for anything.
Are you guys going to obtain the easements and all that kind of paperwork before the issuance of the building permit, or before the final?
CVO, so before we issue a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
Do we have any actual definition of the word "service"?
No. So, this is before you, because we don't have a lot of definitions for a lot of this. And I can flip back to our particular code, so you can tell permitted or not, but...
So, what you're saying, this is allowed use in the mud zone?
Staff believes that it is a permitted use.
Okay.
But we need, it's kind of a gray area, so we don't really know, so that's why it came to you, because Tony, our community development director, didn't feel comfortable making that determination on itself. It was sort of a hybrid or a question. We haven't had anyone with a new building of this type move in.
So, if it weren't for that factor, administratively, you'd be approving the site plan and things of that nature at the administrative level?
Exactly, and you would never see it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. This is going to be one of those esoteric questions, and I'm just warning you in advance. I, the whole time I was reviewing this, my biggest question was, why is this zoned mixed-use downtown? This is not downtown. This has no characteristics of a downtown. It just makes no sense to me whatsoever. I know that that's what the zone is, but, you know, in our efforts to expand what we think is downtown, I see this as an MUC area, or just a plain old general commercial area. It's not downtown. I mean, there's, you know, no sidewalks, no improvements. It's not buildings built right out to the street with amenities like we have downtown. This is, this just doesn't even, it doesn't even match a definition of what I would consider a downtown, or what we have as an example of Oregon City's downtown. So, it seems a little odd to me.
Yeah, so we zoned this property mixed-use downtown and created the mixed-use downtown zoning designation in 2004. You'll notice a lot of this section or shelf of the city is mixed-use downtown. We had this regional center designation with not exactly a map of exactly where the regional center is, so the hope is that when it does develop one day, it does show those characteristics, although it's not representative of them today.
So, how does a development in this zone along that section of Washington Street, which again, has no improvements, buildings are not built up to the street, it, you know, I guess I would put that down as a long-term, as a project, that we need to just change that. It just, it's never going to be that.
Well...
And I was looking at downtown, you know, and looking at the zone...
Along those same lines, I'm curious, what was this site zoned when Home Depot was built?
It wasn't mixed-use, it wasn't that zone.
I'm thinking it was probably something else.
I don't know, but I can find out for a few minutes. Yeah.
It was tourist commercial for a while, and then we got rid of that zone. It was industrial before that. It was a heavy industrial zone, not IG, but I...
There was a mixed bag in that general vicinity.
Yeah, it was industrial.
And there still is. There's general commercial diagonal, there's general industrial behind it.
Be that as it may, are there any other questions for staff?
I have one. Can you, I think it's the next slide after this. What in the world is high-volume establishments constructed at the human scale? Do we have high-volume establishments constructed at the, I don't know, elephantine scale? Or...
So, that is the description, that is the description for a mixed-use downtown zoning designation, and it's meant to convey that within this zoning designation, we want things to be at a pedestrian-oriented scale. We have standards for transparency, and we want that sort of downtowny feel. High-volume establishments is more or less a goal for the mixed-use downtown zoning designations, that we want places where people will be, and sort of like Main Street, further down Main Street, but...
That's fine. I just was curious if there were other than human scales that were in the, in any of our zoning designations.
It's what I was just saying, where...
Not as aspirations, no.
Downtown, where the buildings are at a scale that a person walking, I mean, people are not going to be walking down there. I mean, I've seen them walk, but it's not at a scale where, you know, you're going to look in their store window and see their product, and you're going to have nice ambient light, you're going to have big wide sidewalks with tables. That's kind of what I think it means, and this is not that.
We, as you remember, we had the jug handle construction recently occur, so they put nice sidewalks and plantings along this Prairie Schooner Way frontage as well.
Yeah, no people walking down there either.
And that's why the applicant didn't have to do any drainage improvements that are already done.
Yeah, I saw them the other day, too.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Let's staff.
Let's go ahead and get the applicant to give us a presentation. If we could wrap this up in four minutes, we can beat last week's time.
Well, that's all in your hands, Jerkidwell.
There's no game on.
We don't have as much reason to get home tonight. Turns out, we didn't a couple weeks ago either. My name is Dana Craftcheck, here on behalf of the applicant. My address is 1120 Northwest Cooch, Portland, Oregon 97209. With me is Scott Fournay from America's Tire/Discount Tire, and the site's engineer, Craig Harris, is here in case there's any questions. I'm going to talk a little bit, and then I'm going to turn it over to Scott to talk about what the use really is, but I wanted to frame the issue, and Laura did a terrific job, and Laura and Tony have been very helpful through this process. Before I got into my prepared remarks, I wanted to respond to a couple of the questions. Home Depot is our landlord, and so they are highly motivated to make sure we have the access that we need, and some of the conditions related to access were really holdovers from the Home Depot approval, that they were supposed to record some access easements and didn't. And so, through this process, we're going to help get those on the books, so I think everything will be buttoned up by the time we get CVO. In terms of the parking, again, Home Depot has every reason to make it work with us as our landlord, and as you frequent users of Home Depot know, right now, in the vicinity of where Discount Tires is going to be, they park a lot of the rental equipment out there, and so that will be moved elsewhere on-site, and so I think that's going to free up some of the parking also. And that site plan that was up on the screen, I think, didn't show the extent of the parking, so there's, we feel like there's adequate parking for the site. We agree that this is a unique zone for this site. If we could have changed the zone, we would have, but with the regional town center, and that there was reasons we couldn't change the zone, and the transportation planning rule, and there's a lot of reasons. So, we're working within this zone, but we think this is a terrific opportunity to get you closer to those ideals in the MUD zone. You know, it's the development pattern. These are large lots without sidewalks, so that's not a downtown feel. There's large uses out there, a lot of non-conforming uses, or different zoned uses. I believe that the Home Depot was zoned industrial when it was approved, I'm not sure. And then Highway 213, not a pedestrian street. You're not supposed to be walking really in that area. The landfill, methane monitoring is expensive. The soils have settled. It's very expensive to build right there also. Notwithstanding all of that, this is a use that's well-suited for this site, and as I mentioned, we're a step in the right direction of what the MUD zone is trying to accomplish. Laura mentioned, we exceed a lot of your standards. It's two-story. It's a human-scale building. What does that mean? Commissioner Mayby? I was in Kaiser, Oregon, for several hours a few nights ago, talking about that. What is human scale? And one of those commissioners, and maybe it's their proximity to Salem, said it best. If you think of the Capitol, that's a monumental scale. The size of the doors, just the architecture, you're supposed to be in awe of it when you see it, versus you can have a building that's the same size as that in terms of building height, but if you have windows, the size of the doors, awnings, it's more accessible, it's more approachable, it's more of a human scale. So, that's, I think, a story I'm going to try to use again when someone raises a question, you know, what is human scale? So, it feels comfortable and inviting to the pedestrian. We did have a PDF with a couple slides. Can you, technically before you is the design, which usually isn't before you, it's a staff level decision, but we wanted to give you confidence in what you were getting. It's not just the use, it's what's it going to look like? And so, this is a rendering of what we expect that the store will look at. This is obviously from the corner. Your code is demanding for the mixed-use development. That also added a couple hundred thousand dollars to the price tag. To give you an idea of what the prototypical Discount Tire store is, I'll show you the next slide. Whoops, back one. So, that's not what you're getting. Next slide. Again, this is what we're proposing for this site. And then the next slide is just some of the landscaping to show it's generous. That island in the middle there, that's compliments of your code, and Laura pushing us to be a little bit more creative, so that will really help screen the installation doors. Next slide. Some features that we're adding, because we are a little bit further set back from the street, just because of the topography and where the Home Depot sign is, that's just as close as we could get to the street. So, to make up for that, we're going to have a fountain, and a bench, and some nice pavers, so it's going to be a very good-looking site, and to the extent there are pedestrians, and maybe just those that are waiting for their new tires to be installed, and they're going to walk over the Home Depot, it's going to be a pleasant pedestrian environment right there. Next slide. So, those are the elevations which you've seen. We added transparency to the installation bay doors at staff suggestion in your code, to really try to give it a very typical storefront, and continuous storefront appearance. And then that's just the image again, and that's the last slide. But the reason we're here, in addition to what the building looks like, is the use determination. As Laura explained, your code's a little ambiguous, and so I provided a handout, and on one side, it quoted verbatim from your code, what is a permitted use and what's a prohibited use on the front side, and I just underlined what I thought were some key terms. A permitted use includes trade, retail trade, and among the universe of retail trade is a specialty store. Prohibited uses include motor vehicle repair and service. So, that's really what we're here to talk about tonight. What are we? Are we a retail store, or are we a motor vehicle repair and service store? And Commissioner Hinkin, you asked an important question. Well, how do we define those terms? Well, you look to your code, and you defined retail store, and it's on the backside of this page, I printed that. And a retail store means a business establishment where goods are sold in small quantities to the ultimate consumer. So, that's, you know, a grocery store versus a Costco, for example. Here, we sell tires, usually no more than four at a time, directly to the consumer, and Scott will get into that. I mean, some people will buy multiple sets for snow tires, or off-roading tires, or that kind of thing, but it's directly to the consumer. It's not a warehouse. Specialty store, not defined in your code. Motor vehicle and recreational vehicle repair and service, none of those terms are defined in your code. So, in the absence of definitions, there's a whole lot of discretion, and that's why we're here. One source that some jurisdictions look to, when there's an undefined term, a lot of places look at Webster's Dictionary, but there's this thing called the North American Industry Classification System, the NAI, NAICS, which is used for statistical purposes. And I thought this was really interesting when we came across this. The code for tire dealers says it's the industry that comprises establishments primarily engaged in retailing new and/or used tires and tubes, or retailing new tires in combination with auto repair services. So, what that means to me, I'm looking at my Venn diagram of what is a tire retailer and tire dealer. They're all retailers, but a portion of them are retailers and automotive service. That's your Les Schwab universe. You know, you can get your brakes done there, you can have other automotive services that have nothing to do with your tires there. Scott will tell you about Discount Tire. All you can get done at Discount Tire is you can buy a wheel, you can buy a tire, and you can have them installed, and services related to that tire. If you've got a dead battery, you've got to go somewhere else. You can't come to America's Tire. So, that's why we are a retail store that sells a product related to cars, and it's installed on cars, but it's a retail store. It's not an automotive service store. I've also put on here this NAICS definition for what is general automotive repair, and I think that's what we generally think of with a repair shop. It's the mechanics, it's the body, the transmission, the dirtier elements of your car. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott to talk about really what Discount Tire, America's Tire, is all about, and then I'll wrap it up.
Thank you. My name is Scott Fournay. My address is 20225 North Scottsdale Road, Scottsdale, Arizona 85254. I thank both Laura and Dana for a great introduction. I'd like to give you a little bit more background with the company itself, so some of it might sound a little repetitive with what has been said, but I'll be open for any questions that you may have. And so, like I said, a little bit of background. Discount Tire was founded in 1960 by Bruce Holly, who's over in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and as they headed out west, they adopted the name America's Tire. That's where you see it some places, and that was in Northern California and Oregon. We've recently won the rights to use the name Discount Tire, which is why we're kind of transitioning over to it for this project. And since day one, the only thing that we've sold has been tires and wheels. We don't do anything else. We just stick to what we know, and we believe we're the trusted experts in that. We believe we've grown to just over 900 stores because of the way we treat our customers and customer satisfaction, the service that we bring, the loyalty we gain from them and have for them as well, and the pride we take in the stores and the communities. People really embrace us, and through word of mouth, we've been able to get out and have over 900 stores throughout the nation. And what I said, it's unique, it's only tires and wheels. We don't do anything with automotive repair. There's no brakes alignments, no diagnostics, no electrical inspections, anything like that, and we certainly don't handle any hazardous materials like oils, batteries, or antifreeze. It's just strictly tires and wheels. It's what we know, we're the trusted expert in that, we believe. And the place that we do it is a nice, clean, safe environment. All the work is done within the store. The stores that we have are modern and efficient, and through this responsible growth to get to these stores, we expect to be here for well over 30 years, and through our remodel program, we want to keep the store fresh and new. We have the long-term maintenance of the stores, and there's also the routine maintenance of it. So, you see a beautiful store like this, we're going to take pride in it. We want to be here. this, we're going to, we're going to take pride in it. We want to be here. The, like I said, the work is all within the building. And part of our business model and store policy is we get everybody in and out within 30, 40, 30 to 45 minutes. It's an unexpected experience. People aren't always trying, or don't realize they can get the tires that quick. So we do that. And we also offer free services with the flat repairs and air checks. And we just want to make somebody's day a little bit better. Like on that Monday morning where they have a flat tire, they can come in and we could get it fixed for them and put them on their way without having to spend a penny. So the work that we do, it's not glorious at all. It's pretty dirty. It's pretty labor-intensive. But we want to have the best and brightest people there. So we try to hire from within the community. So the people in the store, they know the clientele, they know who's there. And we start everybody out at an entry-level position. And as they grow and kind of learn the business and succeed, and as a company continues to grow, it creates more opportunities and it creates dreams for these people to become a manager. Once we get this store built, which we hope to do this year, it'll, it'll make a dream come true for somebody. And we'll have 15 people, full-time employees and additional part-time employees from within the community working at this store. And we kind of attract some of the people with a number of benefits, including medical, dental, paid vacations, and just a network of support, retirement as well. So we really try to make it an employee-oriented and customer-oriented type of business. We're only open Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 6:00 p.m., and on Saturdays, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. That's because we want to give people the opportunity to be with their families on evenings and on Sundays or pursue whatever interests they may have. So that's a little bit about us. And now, why do we want to be here? Well, we think this is a wonderful community and there's a lot of growth potential here. I know probably about two and a half years ago is when we first looked at this site. And the landfill aspects shied us away because we're going to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars additional for foundation work, another couple hundred thousand for methane gas mitigation, several hundred thousand dollars on the aesthetics of the building because, as you saw, it is quite a bit of an upgrade compared to what we usually have. And so when you add that all together with the impact fees and everything, you add about a hundred, one million dollars before we even start to try to build anything as we typically would in other areas. So internally, we use the term, we killed the project and we walked away. We have a great relationship with Home Depot. We've been on a number of their outlets, but we said, you know what? This is kind of too expensive for us right now. But since that time, we've been developing our business site evaluation and really looking into demographics and trade zones and seeing where it can sustain the growth and be there for that 30-plus years because we don't want to open up and then walk away. So as our, as our system and our model changed, we said, you know what? If that lot's still available, that's still a great community. We should be there. So that's what we did. We called up Home Depot and said, you know what? We'd like to try to get back there. So for the better half of nine months, we've been working with Home Depot very closely and of course with Laura and staff over here to meet all the design requirements and needs. We really feel as though we fit in here because it's kind of that little bit industrial area with the Home Depot. Right on the highway, there's the gas station, there's a recycling plant nearby. It's not really out of line with kind of, I know we're trying to interpret the mixed use here, but we really just do retail. All of the work is done within the building. We're getting people in and out in the 30, 45 minutes. So there's no cars in the parking lot overnight. It's a nice, clean environment. It's always a friendly place to go. So that's probably why we want to be here. We, we realize that there is a heavy investment upfront and because of the way we've been looking at the trade zones and the sustainability of another tire store in this market, we can, it'll be successful for everybody. Because we don't want to cannibalize our own stores because they're not too far away from us either. So we wouldn't be foolish enough to do that. So that's why we really want to be a part of this community and hopefully seek your approval here tonight.
So just a couple last remarks I'd like to make before you have questions for us. I'm not going to reiterate all the bullet points that Scott mentioned in our materials in terms of the things about this that make it feel retail. But one thing that struck me when I was thinking about, you know, why is this a retail use as opposed to a service use? And when you go in to buy tires, it's a very different experience than when your car needs to be repaired. If they tell you you need a carburetor, you say, all right, how much is it going to be put in? You don't say. Well, I'm really interested in performance. You know, it drives in the rain a lot, or I really like the way this one looks, or what's my price point? Like you do when you're shopping for tires. It's a retail experience. There's a large selection. And what I would pick would be different than what Scott would pick, for example. So it is that retail, large selection that they have. And it's one reason they're a specialty retail, is their broad inventory. And so that's just the use generally. And about this site in particular, some of the things that we're most proud of is the allocation of square footage. I think this is significant. Only 22% of the square footage of the site is dedicated to where the tires are installed. The balance, 78% of it, is the retail showroom or storage and office for tires. And so when you're kind of thinking, what's the predominant use here? It's the retailing of the tires. We also worked really hard on how this site would be oriented. And two-thirds of the traffic, according to the traffic study, are expected to be traveling around 213. We can't see the installation bays from 213. We tried to tuck that use, that portion, that more car-oriented portion of the use away from where most of the vehicles, you know, that most people would be seeing it. And then the landscaping further screens that area. So we've done what we can to make this as pedestrian-friendly as a use as possible. That concludes our remarks. Other than, you know, this interpretation is for this site, this user. So it's not every tire store. It's this type of tire store that doesn't include everything else in this design, which I think those are three important elements of it. I don't think you need to be concerned that, well, we're just going to blow open the MUD zone wide open. It's very particular to the proposal that's in front of you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant?
You had said something about heavy investment on this. And I need to ask my fellow commissioners, was that part of the landfill there where that's being put on right now? That whole area, even up to 213, was landfill?
No.
213 is on a landfill.
So that has to be mitigated as well, that area right there? Okay.
Yes, it's an active system where there's monthly maintenance as well.
Have you ever been on 213? It kind of goes...
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
It's a dipity-doo.
I just didn't know that area right there had been. Okay.
And I don't think that's okay. It's close enough that there's going to be problems. I have no problem with that element of the issue.
Yeah.
I think, I think part of your store is on stable ground, but part of it is not. And that's what you have to deal with. And for the just general benefit of the methane and all that, it's, it's good that you're over-engineering, so.
I just needed clarification because I didn't realize that before.
We were able to get that confirmed with the Geotech reports that we did. We did some borings on site and with our Phase 1 ESA as well. So it confirms all the methane issues.
So with the methane issues that are present, that's being mitigated in some way and that's been approved by the planning department?
Yeah. So the, the city Development Services Department looked at their Geotech report. As a condition, you'll notice that they needed approval, they'll need approval from DEQ. And then when the building gets reviewed by our building official, they'll also look at things like the foundation. And our engineering department will look at it again to make sure the foundation doesn't affect the Geotech in any negative way. So lots of approvals, lots of agencies. Definitely DEQ approval required.
With the building of it, you meant, you brought up DEQ. I'm wondering about the, when people give you back bad tires and you replace them with a new tires, what happens to those tires? Does that have to be approved by DEQ? Do you take those across to the, the other center across the street?
We have a dedicated program. There's a recycle area in the store. And so we have a couple pickups throughout the week to take the tires and they get reused for other things like being ground up and put back in the asphalt, in the roads. So that helps with the more quiet when you're driving on highways and other roads. So they do, they do get recycled.
So they're picked up and taken somewhere else to be recycled?
That's correct.
Okay. I never thought about it.
Other questions?
Yeah, one more if you don't mind. Will that DEQ action and approval on the methane be prior to or after a building permit has been issued? Because if you run into problems there, you've got 120 days. Or how long do you have after a building permit's been issued to break ground?
You can get extensions if you do a series of things. But yes, it would be before you can start construction in the ground. It would be...
Condition number 12 is prior to construction approval.
So why, why are we, this is actually more of a question for you. Why are we asking for all, all of that information to be conditioned when none of that stuff has been presented to us? I asked a question last time about the Geotech report, and it was very specific and said that they weren't dealing with any of the other mitigation that would be required. And I asked about, well, where was that information? And you said you were going to get, she said she was going to get back to us on that.
So we did review the Geotech report that deals with preparing the site for the building. As you know, at this point, we don't review the foundation. So there's more reports to come about the foundation of the structure and how that foundation affects the geologic part of being on a landfill and, as well. So we reviewed it, we conditioned it. Our city engineer feels comfortable that with the conditions, it'll meet all of our approval criteria.
And if they don't, then what happens?
Then they can't build.
I just, again, I have some nervousness.
Sure.
Because there are so many unknowns and we don't have the information in order to be able to evaluate that.
But I don't think that, I don't think that we as a body can look at that information and make a, or, you know, second judge.
Well, we're getting the Geotech report, which isn't 100% complete.
Right.
Because it only deals with one aspect of the construction.
I guess...
It deals with the site preparation, which is what...
From what I understand is that the Geotech report said that the site is appropriate for this use.
It did.
Right. And that's all I need to know.
And I think if you look at condition number 12, it puts all...
On this page?
On, under page 84.
84.
Recommended conditions of approval. Basically, it's putting 100% of the burden of meeting DEQ and all the geotechnical requirements on the applicant before they can start construction.
Right.
So if they don't meet the, if they don't meet the bar of the requirements for DEQ, the city building official, city public works, engineering, then it's a no-go.
And there are requirements within our uniform building code of like the maximum level of settlement or how far it can settle within that foundation too. So it's very prescriptive in our building code.
Correct me. For the, the question of the use, this wouldn't even be before us.
That's what I was just going to say. Isn't this some more about the...
So what you're doing is sort of complimenting us with this information that we really don't have to act on.
That's what I was going to say.
But all we have to, being asked to act on tonight is whether or not it's a, is a permitted use.
That's the reason it's before you, but you have to vote to approve or approve with conditions or deny the whole thing. It got packaged together. So you're still looking at all of them. But correct. The main question why it's here is use.
Before we get into commission discussion, are there any more questions for the applicant?
Yes. I just wanted to clarify something and forgive me because my head's a little bit stuffed up. You said that you're only, the facility's only selling four tires at a time. Is that what you said?
So when I was describing the definition in your code of what a retail trade use is, it says it's in customer quantities. I don't have it written in front of me. And so I was saying, you know, in this case, they typically are selling tires and no more than four at a time if you need a new set. Someone doesn't come in and say, I'd like 400 tires, please. That would be a wholesale type of use. So this is a retail use. Sometimes people only buy one tire when they come in.
Or they buy four and a snow tire.
Yeah. Or some people might be, buy a couple of sets at a time. But it is for the, it's direct to the consumer. There's not a middle man that's buying tires from them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So...
Did the engineer want to add anything? Since we had some...
I'll be here to ask questions.
So we, we don't have anybody from the general public to testify?
That's correct.
So we will, we will close the public hearing portion and proceed to commission discussion.
Well, for me, once I heard definitively that it's about the tire and the wheel, that there isn't brakes, there isn't alignment, there isn't, you know, it's, it's about this one product and the things specifically dealing with that product. It, you know, at that point, I had no difficulty with, you know, with defining it as a retail store. You know, the other, you know, establishments will, you know, if you buy ski racks, will go out and help install them on your car. Doesn't mean, you know, that that's the business they're in. It's the complement to the service or the item that they're selling. So again, I think, I think they clearly fall underneath the retail store definition, maybe specialty store because it's one item rather than a plethora of small items. But they're not in repair, they're not in service. Yeah, they'll fix a flat, but they won't, you know, realign, they won't fix your A-frame, they don't put shocks on, all those things that I think would, to me, move it into a repair and a service versus, you know, retail and, you know, some assembly required. You know, I mean, it's, they're assembling the, the thing that you bought there rather than Ikea where you have to drive home and assemble it. So.
They'll put it together for you there if you want to.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, I suppose they'll let you take the tire home and put it on your own car if you want to, for that matter. So, so yeah, as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's well within the conforming uses. If it was a broader scope of automotive stuff, then I think very clearly, then it, then it would start to really shift into the, oh. So that's my opinion. I think there's, they've done a good job and the conditions outlined by planning are appropriate. So.
Okay. Denise?
Well, I agree that it's a retail store, but it's a retail store that caters to automobiles. So in my opinion, it's an automotive use. And it's an auto-oriented use because if you weren't coming there to buy tires, you weren't, wouldn't be coming there. That's really the only thing I really want to say that.
Okay. Tom?
To save time, I agree wholeheartedly with what Damon said. That's it.
Paul?
I really appreciate how you guys worked with the building design and created a pedestrian-oriented frontage there. Because that's kind of a gateway to the city. And even though there, you know, the, the interchange is designed kind of unfortunately to allow for that, at least there was some kind of an effort to, in the design to reflect that. I, my only concern about it is, is that, and I don't know how you'd ever solve it, but it's generic a little bit. It's a little generic. And it would be nice if there was some kind of aspect of the building that would create maybe uniqueness to Oregon City. I'm not saying to make it in the shape of a, of a Conestoga wagon or anything, but...
Oh, please.
Rubber Conestoga.
Big tire out there. But, but something, you know, something small, you know, on a small scale that would, that would give it a little uniqueness, I guess.
Cover wagon.
Are you talking about the design?
Yeah. And then that being said about the use, as far as the use is concerned, specialty uses, you know, I, when I think of specialty retail, I think of olives and olive oil and prosciutto and Espanakopada and, you know, all that kind of stuff. But I looked it up too, and I, and I saw that it's really an exclusive sale of one item. And it doesn't matter what that item is. And so it really does seem to fit. This is a difficult site. And I don't really think that you would be able to put an Urban Outfitters here or another kind of retail use that, that you would maybe like to see there. Tires is a pretty good compatible use for a brownfield redevelopment site, I think. And this is an infill from the Home Depot site that was originally approved. So I have a few concerns about the center island. I like the landscape island. I, I think that it really makes the area a lot more, less like a tire store. And I really appreciate the little bench for, you know, someone to sit while they're getting their tires changed. I think that's a really good human-scale thing. My only concern is, is that if they start servicing larger vehicles and trucks, that they are gonna, there's going to be a kind of a conflict there, you know, backing out of some of those service base.
That's a very wide avenue.
It probably is. Yeah.
I mean, I think they could swing a motorhome through.
I'm probably being overly paranoid when I'm saying that, but that, you know, for whatever it's worth. Let's see. And then the only other small thing that I, I look at towards the design is the, the ground mechanical units. There's some discussion about that. And that usually is done by others like PG&E, but it would be really great to have some kind of... kind of integration of, uh, landscape or some kind of screening for those things because they can look really ugly and they can really ruin a site, um, before, you know, after it's all done, they, they plop one of those big green things in there or whatever in a really bad location and so. Yeah, yeah, or a vault or something.
You're talking about the box?
Yeah, vault, a transformer vault or a box or a, yeah, so.
I think the city staff generally requires those to have some sort of screening or landscaping around them and.
Oh, good.
You could add that as a condition if that's not in there already.
Tires.
Okay.
No, not, not, no, green, not, not, not black.
They can paint them green.
They can paint the tires green?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
With high VOC paint.
They did have a, um, in the seventies, they did have a scheme where they were gonna put flowers on tires. Like you could have daisies or petunias.
Remember they were plant, people use them as?
I, I knew people in the industry and the, and that was almost a deal.
They had to be on a VW bus.
So you, so, yeah, right. So, yeah, I can imagine if somebody's saying, well, I didn't want petunias, I wanted daisies on my tires, I wanted to take them back or whatever. Anyway. And then another concern about the parking.
The staff report says that there, the applicant has not proposed to install ground-mounted mechanical units.
Okay, right, I did see that, but I just, sometimes it's an afterthought.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it up though, Paul.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Bob?
The, the, the public hearing is closed.
Well, he's just showing that there's a slide with it.
I'm just gonna show the lease down further. I think it's not just the parking rate in front of the store, there's a police line goes way down there that has all that parking in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That was hard to see, sorry.
Bob?
Well, I think this is a win-win situation. I like what you've done with the site and it's amazing because you're willing to spend that kind of money on it, but I do wanna, uh, I object to any big tire out there painted green. Okay, really, I mean, I'm a, I'm an Oregon State fan and if you put the.
It's bad pitch.
If you, I want an orange one right next to it.
On top of it.
And I don't want anybody deflating any footballs. But I think you've done a good job. Uh, you know, you could split hairs here all evening, and not that we're doing it, but, I think you put your best foot forward. It's, there's nothing uglier than a sea of parked cars, really. I mean, you can have a bunch of Rolls Royces out there and they're still ugly. When they're moving, they're, they're good looking, but, uh, and this might shield a little bit of that, uh, Home Depot, but you've got tremendous exposure there on two thirteen. You really do. And I can understand why you wanna locate here, really. And it's just not local. I mean, you're, you're, you've got a regional store here, you know, uh, two oh five and, and two thirteen, so you've got some great access. And, uh, the idea that you've put your foot forward here and done some good landscaping is, uh, is, is good. But I, I support this and I'm a little disappointed you didn't mention any popcorn, uh, 'cause Les Swab has popcorn. You guys don't have popcorn. That's all I gotta say on this subject.
Bob, I just have to disagree with you on one point, that a sea of, a parking lot full of cars at a Oregon tailgate is a beautiful thing.
Mr. Chairman, I object to any football representatives here tonight and I'd like those stricken from hair.
I, I concur, let's, let's, uh, let's stick to the, we're, we're on topic for tires tonight.
I'd rather talk about tires.
Yes.
Zach?
Um, I really think the problem is just the word service. Um, I mean, from my understanding for tires and, and the industry, uh, you know, repairing tires, replacing tires, tire rotations, you know, tire pressure monitoring systems that, and working on them is, is service. But I don't think that's the intent of, of what the code is after. And I was thinking that would the word maintenance be a better word? You run into the same issues. I don't know if there is a word that we're after and, and maybe we just need a, a longer definition, but, um, I, I think this is a good fit. I, I think it, by their definition and explanation, it is, um, a, a retail store. I, I really like the service treatments that they've made and, and additions to the management. I made a note about that as well and I think, uh, I would support this.
Okay. Denise, you said you had a question?
Yes, Laura, um, one more question, please. If the commission recommends approve, or actually not recommends, if we approve this particular use, um, do, will we have an assurance that this is not going to be applicable to anybody else other than them?
If, you mean if America's Tire were to sell this project to another entity or that another entity would use this interpretation somewhere else in the city?
I mean, this, this interpretation.
That's a great question.
What I'm asking is, does this interpretation apply to this specific application and this application only?
That's how every approval is.
Okay, I just wanna make absolutely sure because I don't want to see, as I'm implying, as you just said, Laura, X, Y, Z business comes in and says, oh, we're just like them. And.
Yeah, that's true.
They would have to come back in and make a case as to why they are like X, Y, or Z, or why it fits into the MUD zone. That's what I'm asking, is to make sure that this is not going to be blanketly applied to anyone else. If it's only applying to this use, I'm a lot more comfortable with it, where my discomfort was, is that this could be used as a blanket or an umbrella that other people might try to get under.
Referring to automotive wise?
No, I just.
Well, any job.
No, for MUD.
MUD.
No, and I appreciate that point, that's a good point. I, uh, I agree with most of the comments that have been made specifically. I think, uh, Zach really hit the nail on the head that, uh, you know, we're, we're talking about splitting hairs between definitions and I, I think this particular use is very appropriate for this particular site. And in respect to Denise's point, I, I don't think that this use may, uh, would necessarily be appropriate in the downtown area. But because it's at this location, it is a good fit. Uh, so I, I feel good about that and, and, uh, in spite of Paul's remark about the, uh, the wagon, uh, uh, design for the, the building, I actually think that the design is very compatible with the existing, uh, Home Depot building and actually, I think, uh, improves the overall look of that intersection compared to what it is now. Uh, so I, I think it's actually an upgrade to the site visually from what's there. And I, I do commend, uh, the design for the site as being a, a really good fit for this particular site, it, it really makes sense. Uh, I, I do believe that the retail use this proposed at this location is, uh, consistent with the intent of the zoning for this site. So I, I would be prepared to, uh, support the proposal. Do you have a?
Mr. Chairman, I've got one question.
Yes.
Are you guys planning to do a monument sign, um, for the site along the front?
Why don't we ask Laura to answer the question if Laura can't answer the question?
Um, there's no, uh, planning staff doesn't review signs, waste site plan and design reviews, so there's no sign in this particular package.
What, whoa, wait a minute?
Sign permits are approved over the counter, um, so when we get new buildings, we, we don't really look at the sign package, so in this.
I'm a, I'm a big fan of having signs reviewed with development.
I would concur with that and I think you ought to add a condition.
Because I think that there's been, there's a, there's a.
There's a synergy that goes with that.
Between signs and, and other things, so I, the only thing that I'd really wanna see is, is this, for the sign to incorporate natural materials and have it externally lit as opposed to having one of those clamshell internally lit plastic signs there.
Which is.
Would they, on their, uh, building elevation?
If there, if there was gonna be a monument sign there, yeah.
We don't know if there will be a monument sign or what that monument sign will look like.
Could you come up with an additional condition that adds the sign? I, I, I was looking for it in the package. I, I think that we should not be reviewing site plan and design reviews without seeing everything and signing, since we just went through the sign code, and I know it isn't formally adopted yet, but I'm anticipating that it will meet those standards and I hope it meets those standards.
Okay, so the condition would just say that their monument sign or all signage on site would comply with our signage standards in seventeen fifty-two, or, sorry?
Yeah, I don't really wanna see a big tall pole sign as you can see for fifty miles on two thirteen.
Well, I, I think what you just suggested, would it, would it be an appropriate condition to, uh, say that the, uh, signage for the building and any monument signs would be in compliance with the new signage code that is being.
I don't think we can enforce that because it's not adopted yet.
Yes, no.
I can cite our current one, yeah, in fifteen two eight oh eight oh is our current signage standards that would apply to them.
Or you can reopen the record and you can talk to the applicant about it. Whichever you'd like.
If, if I may, I'd like to do that.
I would concur with that.
Yeah, if they, I, I just wanna see if the applicant's amenable to that or if there's some kind of workable solution there.
Okay, let's, let's do that.
Just for that particular item.
Yes. So the, the question is, uh, what is the applicant's position regarding signage in, in compliance with the, uh, signage code?
Can we see the front of this door again?
Sure.
Well, with regards to a monument sign, we, when we do have those, we tend to blend them in with the aesthetics of the surrounding. It's not, uh, the casing like you has, uh, one of the items that you had suggested, but it'll be the same scheme as the building, it'll have similar look to it. And then, uh, one thing that I will have to double check because I can't recall off the top of my head, but the lease that we have with Home Depot has their set of restrictions as well. So besides being compliant with the, the city code, which we'd be happy to do with the twenty fifteen code, we'll also have to be in compliance with them. And I don't believe they allow pole signs for us at that site, so you won't be able to unfortunately see it from a fifty miles away.
So your sign is mainly what's on on your building?
Would you guys, would you guys be okay with natural materials, uh, maybe dry stacked stone with, uh, backlit?
Yes, we've done that.
For a mon- you're talking about for a monument?
Talking about a monument sign, yes.
If, if they have one.
Yeah, they may not have one, Paul, you can kinda see it.
I understand, I'm just, I'm just talking conceptually.
It's not like they're gonna miss it.
So I, I think potentially, uh, cause I, when do you think you'll come in for the signage?
And that's it, they're gonna do.
Cause, when's your new sign code in effect?
We have a couple of work sessions for the city commission, February and March, um, and however long it takes to get through that, um, the first, the next hearing will, it'll be continued until April after their work session, so.
If you're able to share it with us, we can be in compliance with the, the version that's available now.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
That's a good question.
Yes.
You guys have just been handed a golden opportunity. Really, I mean, you may, may not think so, but in terms of the design of the sign, given the fact that that's almost a gateway area out there, what our gateway really is on McLaughlin. But given that, the, the traffic, uh, volume there, if you could design a sign that would reflect the spirit of Oregon City and, and the end of the Oregon Trail and do it voluntarily, I mean, that would really be a coup for you people, it really would. If you weren't exposed the way that you are, I'd say, no, don't bother, but you're just right out there, really.
They may also not have an opportunity for an additional freestanding sign because you get one for frontage and since they're just a lease area, they didn't partition, so they don't have their own separate.
I was gonna ask, it's clockamuses, they don't have any at the clockamuse, uh, America's Tire, do they? It's, all you usually use is discount.
It's a monument, it's a monument sign.
All you usually use is just discount tire on the building, isn't it? But from what I've seen.
We can do a monument sign or a pole sign, we will, but, uh, for some of the reasons stated, might not be allowed to even at this site.
Yeah, if, if the code doesn't allow it, of course, I don't wanna, you know.
No, the, the, the less C doesn't allow, not the code.
Well, let, let me ask this, would you be, uh, agreeable to a, a condition that reads something like this, any monument sign, uh, would be subject to compliance with the new sign code using natural materials?
Well, by natural, you mean, natural materials that are available in our area? As opposed to.
And by July.
Natural materials from Arizona, which are not natural to us.
Natural, local materials.
You wanna say primarily natural?
Yes.
So if there's plastic on the face or something.
And by July, that'll be hemp.
By July, it'll be hemp.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're really in rare form tonight, aren't you? Jeez, I'm putting, we're putting you at the end from now on.
See, we'll be seats.
That's, that's why we usually let them sit.
I think so, yeah, we close.
So the, uh, we're, we're closed for the public, uh, portion. So with, with the, uh, addition of, of, uh, condition number twenty-nine, uh, regarding the signage, uh, do we have a motion regarding this?
I'll make the motion, if you want. Do I need to read this whole thing to, to make the motion?
Yes.
I move that we approve the SP fourteen dash sixteen, site plan and design review. Do we need to read the rest of it?
Yes.
CD fourteen dash zero one, code interpretation slash similar use determination and US fourteen dash zero five, geological hazards overlay district?
And that's my.
That's it. And along with the, along with the conditions as, should we read those?
The, the twenty-eight conditions plus the additional condition for the monument sign?
Okay, I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Alright, I'll start down here, Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Espie?
Aye.
Commissioner Guy?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes.
Yay, go forth and build wonderful things.
And put some rubber tires on those Conestoga wagons.
Well, I just thought they'd, to do, to do the, the appropriate sign, they'd have a, a Conestoga.
By the way, our natural material here is basalt, not, not sandstone or other stuff like that. Well, we have a little granite, but we have, we have a lot of basalt.
My house is on sandstone.
I think it must've been a chunk of.
But they have different materials in Arizona.
Would you like the chair elections or minutes?
Let's do the minutes.
Yeah, there you go, one, one.
Let's do the minutes.
You, you wanna do them in reverse order?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's, uh, deal with the minutes. We have, uh, two sets of minutes that are, uh, up for consideration, uh, minutes from July fourteenth and July twenty-eighth. Do we wanna take those individually?
I'd like to move, we approve the minutes of July fourteenth from two thousand fourteen.
Second.
I wanna say that was a difficult meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
And rereading it brought back a lot of memories.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Guy?
Aye.
Commissioner Espie?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the meeting, uh, minutes from July twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen.
I would so move.
I would so second.
That's DM and DM.
Alright.
Seconding and moving.
Let's start down here, Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Espie?
Aye.
Commissioner Guy?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?[1620.61] Commissioner Guile.
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Chair Kidwell.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
And thank you so much for providing those. I, I thought I had printed them off already, and when I went into my file to review them again, I said, "Oh, that's right, we couldn't do the," there was no blue thing.
Yes, sorry, I apologize.
The click on it, that's okay, it's all right.
Okay, and then, the election of planning commission chair and vice chair.
So, Charles, are you willing to serve again?
I'm fine either way, I'm here.
I will make a motion for Commissioner Kidwell to continue as chair of the planning commission.
I make a motion to have it the same as it ever was.
I second.
So, then Chair Kidwell would be your chair, and then Commissioner McGriff would be the vice chair.
Yes, so moved.
I, I, I second that.
All right.
They just like the way I say specificity.
Yes, you can.
That was quite, quite well done.
And I knew if I was a jokester tonight, I wouldn't get nominated in any way whatsoever.
All right, Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Guile.
Aye.
Commissioner Espy.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin.
Aye.
Chair Kidwell.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Chair Kidwell, I have one item for communications, that's commission communication, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to definitely strongly recommend to my fellow commissioners that we make every effort possible to do site visits, and the reason that I'm saying this again is that I can't emphasize enough how important it is for us to physically go out and see what it is that we are reviewing. It makes a lot of difference, and I'm thinking back to one of the applications where I kept mentioning the sequoia tree, and several of you looked at me very puzzly, because I don't think you saw it, but it was on that particular site.
I knew it was there.
I knew, I know you know, because you go by there all the time, but it's, it, it just makes a whole lot of difference, and I think one of the things that brought this more to my thinking was the recent application we had out on South End Road that has subsequently been withdrawn, but there were some things there that if you didn't get out of your car to walk over there, you would not have been able to see, because it wasn't that visible from the school parking lot, and so I just, again, you know, we just need to do it, and I know a couple of the other boards that do land use reviews, I've emphasized that to them as well, they have not as good a track record as we do, but it's just really important that we do that, and I just want to make a pledge that we, to each other, that we will do that.
Yeah, that one property we talked about on, there was the Icon on Peas.
Yes.
Where that had the drainage issue.
Yes.
That, you know, they gave us pictures, but you didn't really get an appreciation until you were standing on that wall and looking and seeing the river and, well, stream, depending on.
The stream, yeah.
Depending on whether it rained or not, but, yeah, it's, and, and, so, yeah, I tried to get out and do as much as I can, but sometimes it's just not possible, but still.
Yeah, I think, I think the public kind of expect, is in, expecting that we are seeing what they see.
Right, and I, I appreciate that, I think that's a great point. I, I do that specifically when it's in a portion of the city that I'm not familiar with. Some of these, like Home Depot, they drive by there almost every day.
Yeah, see, I, I don't drive by there very often.
But, no, I, I think that's a great point, especially like Damon was mentioning, that there are particular sites where unless you get out of the car and you can, you know, physically.
See the way of the land.
Appreciate the slopes and things like that, when you are driving by, you don't really get that sense of presence there, so.
So, when, so when we're asked about expertise contact, and have you visited the site, so that's not a negative to have visited the site.
No.
No, not at all.
Sometimes I was getting that impression when I first joined the board, that you're not supposed to be, I mean, I'm familiar with a lot of these sites, because you drive by them, but it, the way that was asked as part of the expertise, or have you visited the site, I was getting the impression for a while, well, maybe we're not supposed to be seen.
No, it, it's basically asked because somebody could challenge and say, "You don't know what we're talking about, you shouldn't be sitting in judgment, I don't want you to be part of the decision process," so that's why it's asked.
And the expertise, you know, the fact that they're said together, I, I see how you could take it that way, the expertise is only negative if it creates a conflict of interest, it's not necessarily negative. You know, we've had several instances where people have conveyed that they have had contact, and it was a legitimate contact, and as long as you expose that, it's not a problem. It's if you have a contact.
And you don't.
And you, you keep it private and you don't, and then later on, somebody else comes along and says, "Well, I talked to so-and-so, and they didn't disclose it," so that's the only time it becomes a problem.
So, I've even driven to sites, but I was afraid to get out of my car and walk around to get that, "Oh, I can't be seen walking around here."
No, no, you, you should, yeah, I mean, the thing is, is someone, you know, I, what I was worried about on the South End Road one, is that I spent quite a bit of time out there and parked my car, and I thought, okay, well, what am I going to say if somebody comes up to me and asks me what I'm doing? Well, then I will just tell them what I'm doing, and tell them that, you know, as a resident, I can't, that I can't really talk to them about it, but I'm doing my site visit, you know? If they wanted to stand there and watch me, that's, that's fine, but I did not see anybody on any of my visits.
And the purpose of these disclosures is so that the public can question you or ask you details about what you saw, and, and what the discussion, the conversation was, or, you know, what the weather was like, you know, maybe if it was raining, you didn't see something that you would have seen when it was sunny, I mean, the whole purpose is to put it out in the public, it's not because there's anything wrong.
I'm glad you clarified that.
And actually, I think there's been some cases where the testimony, the testimony that we received, they, they were so passionate about explaining the condition, was because I think maybe they had the perception we hadn't seen it, so they were saying, you know, "I've got this horrible drainage problem here, and nobody pays attention when I complain about it, and you guys haven't come out to look at it, so I gotta, I've gotta be passionate about telling you about it," so I think that's usually where that's coming from, is the, the people that are giving testimony are trying to convince us of the condition that we haven't seen.
Yeah, but there are a couple of times that, like on that one you were talking about, I did have to, how would I say, trespass a little bit, but I figured, you know, as long as nobody complained, and I told, you know, if they come out and said, "What are you doing on my property?" I said, "Well, I'm doing my site visit," and there was that one out on, off of Myers Road, that one was a little hard to see, but I figured out how to get on three sides of that property by getting out of my car and walking through the church parking lot and kind of looking through the fence.
Snoopy.
I guess I have a question for you. When they put in an application, is there, I guess, a reasonable expectation on our part that they've given us permission to walk on the property?
No.
Okay.
It's not expressed or implied.
No, it's not, I can't encourage you to trespass.
That's fine, I just.
No, I'm just saying.
But ordinarily, I think that, I think that if you want to visit the site, and you contact Laura and say, "Laura, I want to visit the site," Laura can contact the applicant, and the applicant will make arrangements to do a site visit.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just.
Or the applicant will say, "Sure, let them go wherever they want."
Don't you guys have something on your application that says once you apply, that you're allowing access to the site from city staff?
No. Most of the sites we've had, we've been able to see from either the right of way or.
I was just going to say, I would say, almost every site that we've considered, I've been able to see from roadway or an adjacent right of way.
Yeah, that's same here.
But an applicant would love for you all to visit their site, because that will speak volumes to what they're trying to do, and it's like Denise said.
So, if there was any major one that came before us, I know when they were doing the Park Place Concept Plan, they actually brought the trolley, and they brought our bus up, and walked the mayor and commissioners around through the properties up there, if there was a major one that we, we were considering, would we be going as a group at some point, or still?
Just like Blue Heron, there was very specific training.
Yeah, we went, we had a, yeah, we had a tour of Blue Heron as the planning commission, and it was put in the paper saying that we were going on a tour, and that there definitely was a quorum, because there were like six of us, but we weren't conducting any business, but the city still made the notification that we were there together.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, do we have any other communications, Laura?
Speaking of the Willamette Falls Legacy Project.
I was just going to ask you about that.
We put out a, our FPR request for proposals for the Riverwalk Design. We think, we haven't picked anyone yet, we just put out the RFP, we think that we'll pick a design by late spring, and construction would begin in 2016, 2017, so still a bit far off for construction, and we think that we have enough money to implement at least the first phase of whatever the design would be in this RFP, we would figure out whatever